Anything we want to do. Today is the day when the cities, I challenge you to come to the table, quit talking about it, you've got sixty days because we're gonna walk away from the table. And I'm also asking the private industry, step up chambers, bring your people to the table, this is all of our problem. We all need to work together. You see what we did out there with Tanger? Just imagine what we can do with St. Harbor to make it work, whatever we wanna call it. We can make it work. But it takes everybody to come together to get this problem done. Now, we've stepped up, we're ready, we're willing, we're able. But you got about a month and a half left. And then we're gonna step back because apparently, like I used to tell my daughter, I'll come up here and help. But if you don't put out some effort, I'm going back to where I, going back to doing what I was doing. Because apparently you don't want my help that much, if you're not willing to help. So, I like the CRA idea. We can build it. I think it's gonna take a little bit longer and this temporary housing thing is gonna be a little bit longer than six months, so. Alright, with that, I'm gonna see Joyce, you're, okay, are you, did you push your button this time? Okay, she actually pushed the button, alright, Ms. Denny's.
First of all, Josh, thank you. This is a tough situation, it is. You know, I, we can, we can get there, but in our, in our position, our position is different. But anyways, very genuinely, I, uh, thank you for, for, um, the real life experience and, and your commitment and passion to this. But question, um, and I'm glad Councilman Patterson brought up the existing buildings. Mr. Manager, what about the evac building?
Um, here's what happened to happen. First of all, we're in that building, we use that building every day. Our thought was that we do need to build a new facility for that. That facility should probably be on Indian Road. I mean, it's better to serve the county from there. It's in our capital projects. What we looked at was if you said that that was a facility, we would consider giving, that would be a big donation. But then we would be looking to build a new building. It would push us to move up that building, but we would do it as soon as we finished the building. The reason we suggested that was it seemed to fit all the criteria. You could walk to the building, and the building is against a railroad track, it's got bus service. It's set up on ambulance, so it's really big, you could really convert. So, it's got a private, home, private area behind it. You, you can't see it from the street, it's against the railroad track. So, you would have to build our new facility.
So, there's, there's potential there and it's something that can be put on the table for future consideration?
When we brought that up, that was pretty sound, you know, Jack.
By whom?
The comments I've got back from the city have been, that was, our early discussions.
Well, right now, we're the only ones talking with money in the game. And if we're looking at one of our buildings for an answer from a threat of an ACLU, we're talking.
Let me ask a question. What is the cost of the new Angeles, uh, evac building?
We'll get it for you, we'll get it for you. Okay, it's a substantial investment, but you know what, I mean, it's a service. There's no margin for error, and we've really gotta build it right.
We're gonna spend it anyway.
We're gonna spend it anyway, absolutely.
Yeah, but I mean, if we're talking five, six million dollar building for, uh, for evac, and we're going to give this building over and say it's four million dollars in the long run, I'm, I'm thinking that's, that's not bad, change up.
What, what you would have to do is, what we envision, I, I think with Mr. Daines that mentioned, somebody mentioned, oh, Ms. Patterson, that's the police state. Is, here's what happened to us with the families and children. The three point seven.
About whole place.
Whole place. Um, that three point five of investment will go a whole lot further because you're taking advantage of all the existing infrastructure. So, out there, you're gonna get a whole lot more value for three point five million. That's why I've always been skeptical of the cost of your building. What we were talking about was if you use an existing building, whether it's a police state or special in case of evac, that if, say the council would decide that in addition to the building, which comes land, you would put up million, or put up money. Four million in that building, first of all, we'd have to go quite four million, but four million in that building would go a lot further than trying to build a home building. There is no comparison.
And that, I mean, that's what I was saying in my original comments too, so, so thank you. I think we need to keep that, um, at least on the radar, at least as an option. But here's a question on the discussion with CRAs. And looking at this printout at the top, it's got the county up here. Are you including the county donation in the, in, in this CRA?
Basically fifteen percent would be of the whole thing. So, if you look at it like that, you could argue and say five and a half percent's county, or seven and a half percent's county, seven and a half percent is from whatever city.
And that answer is absolutely no. We have said no operational dollars. We have said that. That was our commitment, and now we're gonna find half?
Well, the CRA is, the argument would be is that it's going into the CRA. If we make a finding that homelessness is, uh, has a connection to the economic development aspect of the CRAs in general, I think we can utilize this fund.
I think the council has decided, here's the difference. The, the, here's a big difference. The big difference was an ongoing operational cost, Oscar's General Commissioner General Plan. The CRA money comes from us, but is their money. So, you, you don't have, unless it's in the plan and how you do the plan, you don't have say over that money. So, this is treated, they're very much, they believe this. This is their money. And I think that's what Mr. Wagner said, is they don't see CRA money as, as our money. They see it as their money, and we don't have control of that money. That's, that's money they control the whole time. So, so it, it is no different than us not giving a contribution somewhere else. If you take out CRA money, you're not affecting anything else that we spend.
It makes you feel better, having to take thirty percent of the city's contribution. It's the same, you know, it's just.
I, I understand, but it's interesting, my mind is flashing back to the presentations that we've had on CRAs, and the lead PowerPoint is usually blight. And, and I, I, I've seen some of them, and before they got to us, I suggested some of them be taken out for defining blight because it is what you want it to be sometimes and, and to make your point. So, going forward, you might get what you want with blight, um, under the legal definition and the parameters, um, in doing business with the government. So, I'm still not in support at this stage of using the CRA funding for operational dollars. But, um, boy, I would think twice before playing that blight card anymore with CRAs. Because this is the truth, it is, it's, 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 uh, the under value, if you will, of funding, uh, with a government source, it is. That's, that's all my comments, thank you for the clarification, thanks.
Yes, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for your tolerance and giving me a second chance to speak. CRA dollars for blight, we play, we play that card all the time. That, that, that's not new, and this would not be in a different than having a party on one of the main streets around here, the CRA dollars. If you consider that as being blight, I got some land I wanna sell, it's a waste.
I'm with him.
Oh, and, and I wanna talk a minute about the ACLU. I would hope that we don't get hung up on the fact of not being major players because we feel threatened by the ACLU. I think that we, if you're looking for reasons not to be active participants in anything, find a reason. Ladies and gentlemen, this is all of our problem. And for us to think that sometime in any relationship, you may have more money, more skin in the gang than someone else. And so therefore, if your kids need shoes and you bought the last pair, and you're a divorcee, and your husband doesn't come forth and bring, to buy the next pair of shoes, so the kid goes without shoes because you bought the last pair. I believe truly that there is no room for any of us to back away from this. It's enough blame to go around. St. Harbor may not, and the location may not be the best solution. But if we don't come to the table in agreement with the cities and the counties, then we too are just, it's guilty. I didn't know, and I, I was ready to put a gate up around two fifty. But from the meeting that I attended last week, it reminded me of my responsibility as a citizen. That I must do everything possible to try to help make a difference in this homeless situation. I don't care if we got, I was the one, if you can call, said that we should go and put the money up for, for the land. So, let's, let's do that so that we, we can be the monkeys off our back, we've done our part. But you know, just not enough. And we gotta do a little bit more, we gotta do a little bit more. But we have got to come to the table. It's enough blame to go around. I don't wanna fight with my friends from the cities. But I do want to bear in mind that we have people that are homeless. And for us as elected officials pulling the rope, one group at one end and another at the other, and the homeless will stretch it. So, so just, just come with a different perspective. Sometime you just have to try a little harder. And, and are we doing everything possible? I don't know. I think not. Because anytime a problem is not solved, someone is not paying attention to try to do, do the right thing. So, I, I, I don't wanna sound too hard on any organization, any group of people. All I want to say is this. CRA dollars, why not? ACLU, if you wanna come to the table and you got solution, why not? Those folk that were around that, in that, um, the, the news drone building, if you have solutions, and you know what? Eighty percent of the discussion was the bickering among the elected officials. Am I right, Josh? So, they see us as being the problem, not the solution. You know, somewhere along the line, I heard that it was ten people could get a bottle of liquor and decide all together what to drink, whether they all like to drink something different. And that's very true, but you get a, a bunch of, uh, of us who've been around the block a time or two, and we know it all, and no one's idea is good enough. Whatever happened to the art of compromise? I just think that we have to do that. We cannot, they have, we've given them the timeframe. And I'm there. But I was also even more there two weeks ago. So, I think that we have to try to work together to do something. We have a problem, and we all together, let's try to work together to solve it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright, Mr. Wagner, and then Ms. Denny, round it up.
It's interesting that we're here, and I'm looking at the, the most email stories on the news channel. Top bill, Gert's Downer, ten million dollar headquarters in Daytona. Next one, the Chipper story, which is actually pretty interesting to celebrate. Uh, seven home, seven hundred home farm-focused community in Deverry. And then Tanger Outlets, while, while raising draws former people. So, I mean, we've got some amazing things going on in this city, absolutely without a doubt, Countywide. But this has seemed to politically and media-wise come to the forefront. But as far as direction, at least what I heard from Jason, Pat, me, and Joyce, is that the direction was there to look at the CRA dollars and the fifteen percent, what I, what I brought up, I'm mistaken. I wrote it down, we supported that. The only time the lawsuit comes into play, guys, that I see, right now, I mean, they never give us a zero percent chance, but we haven't done anything to engage, I think, in any, any type of liability. It's, if we decide to take action on the two fifty Beach Street, that's where some potential arguments could be made. That, that's my concern. I mean, like I said, I support the city, and I, I know it doesn't seem like a lot of what the city's doing. But they are trying. I mean, the, them getting together, and even though I don't agree with Pam Ludes on quite a few things, she is trying. Kelly White, last night, made a motion out of the gate to try to fund St. Harbor's operations. I'm very proud of her leadership in the city. And it means a lot to me that she did that, that took a lot for her, that we, I respect her even more than I previously did, that's a good thing for her. People are trying, the city, it's just, you know, I have my example of Jim Dennehy going out in, in less than three days, coming up with a solution. We have great staff that I'm very proud of, I'm very supportive of. I almost feel like I keep having to make motions and, and push people to get them to, to, to commit, to think a little more about it, to go talk to Salvation Army. You know what I mean, it's like, I don't feel like I should have to do it. But the reality is, is we kinda have. I mean, did I have to sit here and start thinking about CRAs and say, hey, guys, it's right in front of you, you have a CRA, and all you have to do is ask us, hey, there's other CRAs, maybe we can all contribute? But that's, I don't feel like I should have to do that. I shouldn't have to go, hey, the hospital is already spending money on homelessness, and their CRA money goes, you know, it's, it comes down to this one thing. This is not a homeless issue, this is a funding issue. It's constantly coming up, that it's, it's about the money. And that's why I think the CRAs, is everyone that I've heard from the cities has supported the, the funding. So, uh, or supported the concept of St. Harbor. It doesn't matter if I believe in it, doesn't matter if I don't believe in it. What matters is the cities believe in it. To me, that's the most important aspect, because they're, officers are the ones that are going to making that decision on, are you wanna go to jail, or do you wanna go to St. Harbor? So, at the end of the day, which is now, Jim, do you, there were the four of us, and, and at least I heard, that wanted you to look at the fifteen percent of CRA dollars. What we don't have direction on is what do we do about, we're in this sixty day period, what do we do direction-wise for Jim, since Botran's not an option? And I agree with him, after everything he brought up, it's not. What do we do at two fifty? I will not support just trespassing people.
If I can add, maybe try to help you, try to help get the council there, based on what I've been told, I would suggest a couple of things. First of all, my philosophical note, what you're facing here is not something new. What we have done in a lot of cases, whether it's Beach Drive, and whether it's the Consolidate Dispatch, whether it's helping us on Botran, is if they say, look, no longer, we do everything. Here's your problem on homeless. This will never work if it's one done. That's the dilemma here. So, in all fairness, the cities have found a long time, just keep talking long enough, and we'll get tired, and we'll pay for it. That won't work this time. That's why you're running into a problem. Um, here's what I think I heard. I would suggest that I think the contract idea is a good idea. Because it solidifies once and for all that we meant what we said. Number two, to touch on, I think we ought to consider one thing in there we modify. How about we modify our contract? And say that if the city, I do think the city of Daytona Beach is the right party. If the city wants to, wants to unify, utilize that money for a solution, other than St. Harbor, as long as it's capital, which gives them some flexibility if they decide. Here's the other thing, if you're gonna have to own it, run it, and everything, you may really think about it, if, if it's not gonna work. If they come up with another building, and then we would have to talk about them if it's our building, in terms of what our contribution would be. But if they decided they wanted another building, what we would say in the contract is, they could bring forward to us, and we would talk to them about some other opportunity. If they, see what I'm saying? I think, why back them into St. Harbor if they start to come to that conclusion too? In other words, we'd say in the contract, it wouldn't mean we'd say we'd absolutely do it. We'd say is, if they come up with another alternative to solve this, we would listen to it as long as our contribution's no more than four million dollars for capital, no operating costs. I think that gives them some flexibility to deal with, is there another option? Because I'm starting to think there, there are people starting to say, you know what, if we're gonna have to do this, it's gonna hap, I mean, I've already had a couple people tell me, Josh, they think they oughta start off smaller. I think they're thinking, I think they're starting to realize it could cost a lot of money. So, I think, I'd like, if I had the direction from the council, would work on within, well, I think it's good to have a contract. Now, you may wanna think about for the next meeting, do you want a sunset on that contract? But, but I would think you would wanna do that after we give it some thought and we bring you a, a copy of whatever we're.
Sixty days? I don't think we, I personally don't think we back off all this sixty days. Unless you guys think we should.
Well, the only problem is, we're so far down the pipe that by the time they get the contract due.
It's gonna be about fifteen days.
Yeah, you won't have much time. So, the point is, that's up to you. I'm just saying that if I get direction, which I think I have, to do the contract, that would be my suggestion. I think that gives them an opportunity to deal with their own fate, that, like, they changed their mind.
The, the director from the council still stands in the sixty days, and that direction has not changed.
Okay, now, now we'll build that into the document.
Matter of fact, during the mayor's meeting, they were kinda, a little bit, that, well, does that mean now, no, it means when we had our, when we had our council meetings, our CRAs.
I, I will look at, and so we'll, we'll do, we'll draft that one for you. I'll look at, uh, the CRA. I, I, one thing we could do, Ms. Denny's, if you want, I don't think there's any reason the council, lest they answer, can't do it. I think we could say that the fifteen percent actually comes out of the city side. I, I, I mean, there, there's two sides to the funding. I think we could probably tell them that they have to use their portion of it, unless there's debt incurred against it. Let us look at that. I, I wanna get direction to look at.
Uh, Jim.
Yeah.
One thing. I really don't think we'd all be, put our, put ourselves in the position of bullying cities in contributing out of the CRAs. If the city of Daytona Beach can convince them to do that, fine. But that's not our job.
Well, I'm, I'm, you tell me what direction you wanna go.
I don't see that as being our job at all.
The direction from the four people was to look at it. I personally think it is our job.
I'm not, I'm not making that decision. If a majority of you wants me just to look at the implications and what we, we should have in money, I'll do that. I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting a policy decision, that's not my business.
I, I'm all, look at the implications and what, what, what would happen.
Okay.
Where, when, why?
I'm not sug, you have to decide that, not making.
That's our decision.
Um, I, all I mentioned was, there are two sides to it. Funded, I'll look at that implication too. Uh, so, but those are two things that I think that we can move ahead on, is looking at that, and also drafting this agreement. Now, what Josh said is, his last thing is, I don't have any direction. My recommendation was to hold off until they announce to us that, that the Salvation Army is open. And then, I was planning on trespassing with people, saying there is an alternative, which is Salvation Army. I, I need direction other than that, if you want me to do something other than that.
I don't support the trespassing of the two fifty because there's not enough room. I mean, the, the alternative is, hey, forty-seven of you can go there, the rest of you, where do you go? I mean, the, the city has already taken the position that they, they, their code is, you can't have it anywhere. So, the next step is, we trespass them there, they go to the, the county, they go to the annex, they go to the justice center, I mean, I, I'm.
All I need is direction. If you're gonna tell me, don't trespass me, I won't trespass.
Yes, Ms. Denny. I mean, just.
Well, here's another piece of this that can't go, that has to be in the discussion. There, at North Beach, the county building, because the city closed the park and the facilities and the benches. And a park in that area is a public forum. Two fifty North Beach is not. It's, it's, it's a place of business, and our employees, our employees are concerned. So, again, an action by the city is forced back onto us with all the consequences and put it back in our hands. I think when we go forth in discussions with the city, Mr. Manager, if you would talk to them about opening that back up again, we, we need some good faith somewhere. Something has to happen here because the original, you know, we're, all the folks that are at North Beach, where were they before North Beach, or were they? And they're grown up.
Were they a big group of over in Sandy Island?
They, well, they, they are, but I, 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 I can't help but think there's a concerted effort to consolidate, to make a point politically, there is. So, if the city is closing down their facilities and forcing it on, onto us, and we're looking at, now we have a concern for the health, safety, and welfare of our employees. I think if we open up Salvation Army, they open up those beds, uh, I think we should trespass, I really do. And along with that, I think we need to have, Mr. Manager, I would ask you to speak to the city yet again, to open up the parks and their facilities. That something, it can't just keep coming back to us and, and shoving it back our way, saying, you've got to take care, we're trying, we're absolutely trying, we're committed, we're looking at options, we've engaged, we've got the checkbook open, we're ready to put a contract out there. But at some point, you know, the city needs to do something, they need to perform somehow. It's, it's within the city of Daytona Beach, for goodness sakes.
What is Mr. Efforts, Vivo, and trespassing, what going on?
The question, what, what is? The cases arise in the context of, are you making it illegal to be in a place where you otherwise normally can be? So, uh, public parks and the like, uh, I have not seen any, uh, in our, the case of our building, I think that you likely could sustain a, uh, trespass or, you know, a, uh, an enclosure of a curfew to that, that building, because the public's, uh, it's not open to the, to the public for business during, uh, my, my time hours. Uh, Mr. Wagner's concern, as easy as expressed to me, uh, is that we will be seen as acting in, this is my words, not exactly his, but in league with the city. And that we'll, uh, be, uh, we'll be inviting ourselves to seek at any lawsuit. And I think we can sustain our action, because we won't be able to be sued over it. His concern is that, that the city's going to use, uh, that, that, uh, that trespass and the, and the facility at, at the, uh, Salvation Army. And that the, the facilities will prove, prove to be inadequate. So, there, I mean, you, you could, while I think you could sustain it, you may wish to wait and see what the effect of the Salvation Army is. So, if you know, if you're dealing with a known product, uh, the, uh, there's not, the cases don't, uh, don't, don't align themselves with saying so many are homeless and so, there's so many beds available. It's a question of how many wish to, wish to, uh, use the homeless shelter. The case, the cases of Joel versus the city of Orlando, said that it was never a circumstance where the, uh, where the shelter in Orlando was full. Well, it probably doesn't accommodate every homeless person in, in Orlando. So, you know, I, I think the likelihood is we would prevail, it doesn't keep us from being, being sued. And of course, in maybe nineteen weeks' reaction, the, the issue is not, not the damages, it's the.
Could we live to your discretion?
I, I don't think we were, I think we gotta give them direction.
Dan, or, or.
No, no, what I mean is, do it, do it to the extent you can, if it gets to be a problem, then stop.
Well, let's, let's, I could do this.
I'm not saying that, that, you know, it's your decision to go to it or not. I'm saying that, that, uh, we need to get two fifty Bee Street open and operating. And, uh, you know, do it to the extent you can. And if you do run into legal problems where they are insoluble, then you have, and stop.
There's one more thing to it, too.
Yeah.
The ones that were made in the bag, and it blows my mind, the strongest emails I've made, and, and I've gotten a ton of positive emails for what we're doing, more positive than negative, by far. I've never had so many people, good on my emails and good on my phone calls, I'm so behind because there's been an outbreak, what can I do to help, what can I do to help? There, people went out. The ones that hate us, and I still don't understand, is the Beach Street merchants hate us. But yet, we're the ones trying to get relief on Beach Street. So, the problem is, our two fifty Beach Street. So, the problem is, our two fifty Beach Street situation, it keeps getting thrown in my face that, like, some of these emails I should share with you guys, they're scary. That we're the bad guys on Beach Street, when this problem existed before I was born. I mean, it's always been there. It's because of the lax of the code and what they allowed for the structures of Beachside, what they allowed to do with those old homes, that were gorgeous homes. I mean, I wasn't there, you know what I mean? So, here I am getting destroyed and beat up. So, I'm in this dilemma. The idea behind, and the only idea behind, the temporary and I, if the council doesn't do it, I'm not pushing, I'm not pushing on you guys anything. But the idea behind the North Street was simply because there's already a shelter there. I mean, you know what I mean, it's like, but the idea behind it was, it's not that we're saying you can't sleep in one of our areas. It's just, you can't sleep here. And that whole reason, honestly, you can keep them in two fifty Beach Street, and it's kind of the same thing to me. But the idea of moving them to North Street for the short term was for one reason, one reason only. The Beach Street merchants. That was it. I mean, it's the emails, and I get it. Now, granted, I am gonna say, some of their arguments, they're flat out silly. They just have a bad business model, and it's not a homeless killing the business, it's just, the world has changed and they're not gonna, it's just business. But there are some being affected by it significantly. So, when we talk about two fifty, again, it's not that I mind them sleeping in county property. I don't. But it's employees, one. Beach Street merchants, equally, one. It's one A and one B. So, our interaction at two fifty, it's hard. So, the idea behind this whole tent city, it's just recreating what two fifty is for the short term. I'm not saying you can't put a six-month time period on it, you know, whatever it may be. I'm just in fear that we continue to be portrayed as the big bad wolf, the bad guy, all these things, when I want to shake them and say, look, have you been to the meeting? We're talking about four million dollars. We're talking about land, apparently pushing the envelope. But we're the bad, because they closed the bathrooms, they closed out cities, they've closed an island that is funded by the citizens of Lusia County through CRA dollars, through Echo. I mean, the fact that Manatee Island is closed, when we, the citizens of Lusia County have paid for it, and that is, we should all be appalled. That's appalling.
The other thing that you-
No, no, it's mainly, I mean, they just closed.
The other thing that needs to be on the record was that property. The reason for that property goes to Josh. The other thing that's on the record, you're not talking about, that needs to be on record. The reason, that property wasn't picked out to hurt anybody. Already, it's impacted, when we were there, there had to be forty people walking around there already. They feed lunch out of there every day. They have the whole mirror of services there.
The showers are there.
That barber's there.
Their mail is there.
They get their mail there. So, and here's what else to do, to totally, was that, was that they get fed, they feed out of that shelter three nights a week, the churches do. They said if you could bring more people across the street, so they had greater concentration, they may be able to get the churches to feed five to seven days a week. So, this was not, this wasn't just moving. It was also, it was safer and better for people. Now, remember, in a lot of cases, and this is your position, these are also people where we wouldn't have rules. So, that's one of your other problems, is a lot of these people are people that they don't want to go to some of these facilities because they don't want to follow the rules. This would be just temporary. Now, I was always led by the six months. Josh has his own point on what's, I'm not suggesting more than that. And that was to try and give the cities some relief. Now, they don't want to do that, that's fine. But we just didn't pick out a spot because we felt like any spot, we had no, this seemed to be the one place where they had all the services, where they had all the impact.
When I was, did this thing, that's where I went.
Yes.
And guess what? I migrated through the neighborhood. I was at Beach Street sleeping. I migrated through the neighborhood to go get food. Why? When I went to the one.
He got lunch?
So, I did what, everyone from there is going over to eat lunch. They're going to, and I'll tell you what, the lunch, I actually took a picture of it, I snuck it. They did an excellent job, and it's all volunteers. They each do a day. It was a nutritious lunch, there were lots of vegetables, there was a salad. Everyone was very nice, I felt like there was some dignity to it. They did a really good job. But I migrated to go there because where else am I gonna go?
So, a lot of the people that you have at Beach Street, sometime during the day, they go-
Well, Mr. Manager, that brings up a question. Are you recommending that we try this for six months, that we have the-
Here's what I was gonna suggest. My suggestion was, we wait to see how the thing works, Salvation Army. Because I thought they were gonna try and go beyond forty-some days. I thought that that was the most. We give them, maybe to the next meeting, we see what happens. Maybe we don't, maybe what we try in the interim period, you said, using the judge's judgment, maybe I'll try to get some additional people out there, encourage these people to start using the Salvation Army and hear what their issues are. We come back then, then if you want to suggest this, I can't suggest it because I can't suggest breaking the law. No matter where you do this, well, I don't know, you can make a decision, you want to take it on legally, but I would be telling you that their code says we can't do it.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of giving the city of Daytona Beach a chance, so that's why.
No, I don't think there's, I'll try, I'll try. Here's what you-
Sixty days.
Now, the other, here's what we'll bring back for the next meeting, if we can, Dan. I don't do the legal work, so whenever they can, Dan has to speak to this. I see you want a contract, and we'll put in the things in the contract that belongs. I do think we ought to give that option, if there's another capital, encourages them to look at something else, like the police station. The other thing is, I'm not promoting this policy. I will just give you the implications of the CRA so you can discuss it. And then, I'll let you know what happened by that time at the next meeting. And then, if you decide you want to try something, I guess what I'm telling you is, if you want to try anything, you're probably gonna violate their code. So, pick your poison. And then, you can tell me what you want to do, how I have the costs all done, and I'll be talking the land over, and I can get the land leased cheaply.
There is one, there is one thing we can do if you guys want to, those that don't want to support the CRA dollars. And the four people I've mentioned that did, okay, looking at it. How about asking the city of Daytona Beach to take a position that we should use fifteen percent of all CRA dollars to pay, to give to them, to help them support safe harbor? Let's leave it to the city, decide whether the other cities should join in. If they think it's appropriate that we should bring the ordinance back and amend it, so everybody contributes to the CRA.
It's always been about the city, Josh, this isn't anything new.
I agree, Dan, but what we're asking, what we're asking the city to do.
Yeah, see, when you start getting people on their back.
Do you understand why I'm doing it? Is if we do, let's say we review and look at the fifteen percent. I would love to know, I want Daytona Beach to take a position, a formal position, that they think it's a good idea. It's not just their money, it's everybody's money.
Well, I'm gonna take one step further. I would say that it's Daytona Beach's job to convince the other cities on ours.
Exactly. That's what I'm trying to say, it's all about the cities.
The cities aren't gonna self contribute.
Well, there you go.
We decide on the CRAs. I think CRA is personal, and the whole reason for it is simply because blight and homelessness are married. All CRAs should-
That's a county dollar. I don't think that the city should do, the county should come up with that, not the city. Because it's county money.
Here's another thing, it caught my attention on this one, Josh, with Manatee Island and Echo dollars. Council, we brought the hammer down on the city of New Smyrna Beach and their parking lots because they were funded with Echo dollars and every county citizen funded it. Remember that?
This whole area's funded by CRA.
So, but let's go back to Echo, I mean, stand alone. This argument alone, this changes everything, and my point, the city of New Smyrna Beach, can we not demand that Manatee Island be opened? It was funded from all the taxpayers in Lusia County with-
That's, is that a motion? I second it. I'd like to take it one step, one-
I need your motion.
This man is the opposite.
Manatee Island.
Can I add something to it?
I'm referencing Manatee Island funded by county Echo dollars. I mean, it, we were brutal to the city of New Smyrna Beach. Why, why is that, you know, the same, the same, um-
Two day town?
Yes.
Okay, so is that a motion?
It is a motion because county dollars were funded with Echo dollars on Manatee Island. I think if they don't open it, if they choose not to open it up for access again, we demand a repayment of the Echo dollars funded to support that.
I would like that, that's a second. And I would like to second that.
There's a second and a motion. I didn't know we were voting on anything here, but there is a second. And we will have some discussion, trust me. Okay, the motion still has a floor?
They didn't have a choice.
Done, second half of the floor?
Yes, I have a floor, I'd like to talk. I'd like to take it one step further, and I'd like to ask Jim DeNeen to have a staff member drive to Daytona Beach right now and ask to inspect the bathrooms on Manatee Island before three o'clock today. And if they say no, I'd like it to be documented that we asked to look at the bathrooms. I want them inspected. And if they say no, they say no, but I would like a staff member to do that as part of this. And please bring a camera.
Everybody who has a cell phone has a camera.
And if anyone's over in that area, I'd like them to look at the gate to Manatee Island from now. If anyone's listening.
Is that it? Done.
Thank you.
Mr. Daniels?
I got a question. Is Manatee Island closed off and maybe they have the gate locked?
Gate locked, twenty-four hours. And when I was sitting on the side of the river, because part of the homeless process, I didn't realize it, it's just absolutely boring, and I'm a one-horse work kind of guy. So, I'm sitting on the riverside, just looking around, and here's the Manatee Island completely lit up, like a stadium at nighttime. It's closed. The CRA is probably paying for blood bill. So, I'm like, what is going on? It's like it's, it's like it's toying with me. And I'm like, sitting there looking, going, how is this possible? Yeah, just, yeah, I guess you could swim. But yeah, total lit up, man, or Doug, I was like, how's it possible?
I would like to hear from the city before we vote on it. That's finally hanging up, what they have done, and this seems to be where you're going with it, is that the bathrooms are not really damaged, that this, that was a pretext for closing the island. If that's the case, then I'm, yeah, I'm there with you solid. But I would like to hear from them before we jump to that conclusion and take the simple decision. Thank you.
Okay, Joyce, let's move back.
I don't mind taking a vote on it today, but I think we must be mindful of the fact that this is not the same as the New Smyrna Beach situation inasmuch as they were going to be a fee for non-New Smyrna residents' access. And, but you was, because your access would be, it would be where you hang your hair, not on the field. Okay. That goes down easier.
Don't. Look at this. You want to go before Mr. DeNeen or I?
Let me just say a few words. I've been out for about thirty minutes downstairs with the future leaders group.
And how was lunch?
I had two questions. It's interesting, because when I took some questions, I had questions I had got related to homeless issue wanting to understand what's going on. And I also told them, I need to go and read the newspapers for the last three days to understand what's going on, what this means and what's going on. You know, of course, I gave my opinion, so if you want to run down there real quick and find out what my opinion was.
Why, it's better for you.
But I think we need to know what's going on in Manatee Island. You know, I, every month, I'm over there at the City Island Library, the parliamentary procedure class that I'm part of. We meet over there, and I see the homeless people coming into the library and that. And it's all opened up, and everything seems to be going on because of the farmer's market over there. And so, I would like to, I agree with it.
Where is Manatee Island? Somebody's got, I understand there's an island there with a house on it, is that the Manatee Island?
It used to be called Rat Island, you might know it better about Rat Island.
No, I don't know Rat Island.
And maybe we should change the name back, I don't know.
Where is Manatee Island? So, everybody knows.
Right across the street from two fifty Beach Street. But we're in check now.
Is that where the house is, the historic house, off there?
One thing though, just for the record, is I have been told by multiple people that it received an ECO grant.
Not county, these are not county budgets.
Multiple people have received an ECO grant. I'm giving clarification to make sure it received an ECO grant. If not, at a minimum, it has received CRA dollars, so I still feel comfortable going there and saying, we want to look at the bathroom. But before we say ECO grant, CRA dollars are county dollars, so. Just so they don't turn around and say, oh, the county's stupid, we never have an ECO. I don't want that argument to be made. I want to get verification.
We'll share.
All right, okay. Okay, so, Mr. DeNeen, any closing comments or remarks?
I do have a suggestion that the council might want to make. After hearing all this discussion.
You made it this long.
No, it came out of what you said, and I'm trying to listen to all of you, okay? I don't see anything wrong with the, all the cities, among everyone that has CRA. And by the way, Deltona's coming in for CRA. They all have said how much they support this, and like a lot of things, it's all lip service. But if they believe in it, why don't we ask them whether they would be willing voluntarily to take fifteen percent of their CRA dollars to go to this fund? And get them on the record if they're gonna say no. We did the same with vote training, I think it really has clarified things. Let's see if they really mean it. Understand, this is not supposed to be money going to their general fund. So, this is money they get. So, the bottom line is, why not give an opportunity? Maybe we'll get a surprise, and they'll figure out this is a way to fund that they hadn't thought of. And where, how will we worse off by finding out? And if they want to, fine, and if they don't, then you know. Then you know you'd be shoving it down their throat. I think we take the high road and ask them, saying, if you come up with this idea, all they can, if they tell you no, maybe we'll get a surprise and they'll say, it'd be okay.
I have no problem with asking the questions.
Just a thought. I'll ask them after the next mayor's meeting.
My view is more my decision as a policymaker, just to do it for Daytona Beach. If Daytona Beach fights it, I would not part with it.
I don't think you ever give up your right to do it. But I think asking was just courtesy.
I think if you wanted CRA, that would be one of the stipulations of the CRA. Just that, but when you say, ask if they will, you're giving them the option as to what they really will not do.
Fifteen percent turned back into the homeless. You know what, I like that.
I bet you, if I'm gonna tell them we're gonna do it, do they have an objection?
What, do they want the CRA?
Yeah, that's the answer. Do you want the CRA? You gotta take back fifteen percent to the homeless shelter and make sure that that thing works. Yes, sir.
Well, in fact, that may be the more viable option. We'll have to take a look at the CRA statute, because the direction was for us to review it, and there are, we may, we'll provide some alternatives at ten fifty years old, including looking at CRA's track.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor to open up Manatee Island, with a second by Mr. Wagner, because that thing is financed by government dollars, county dollars. So, there is a motion on the floor to require or request, how did you word that, require?
Open it up, yes.
Require Manatee Island to be opened up twenty-four hours a day.
No, we can't require time.
Can't require time.
I know that, we don't have that.
Access, it's access.
Okay, so, allow access. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, Mr. Daniels's opposed.
And just because I want to hear from the city first.
And that's why, because you want to hear from the city first, but fair enough, and I have a feeling we're not gonna hear from the city for a couple hours. Because they're out tomorrow. All right, we're moving on to number eight. Did all you media guys get enough?